Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Tuckerton Borough Council, August 18th, 2025. Adam Clark, would you please read the Open Public Legings Act statement?
Yes, provisions of the Open Public Legings Act, having in mind that this notice was published in the Beacon and the other part stating the time, date, and place of this meeting.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Breland?
Right.
Mr. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Colangelo?
Here.
Mr. Deamore?
Here.
Mr. Dupree?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand for the flag, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're welcome, everyone, tonight. A place I haven't seen before, so I hope you're going to enjoy our meeting tonight. We'll start with legislation. Councilman Breland.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Tonight I have an ordinance requiring a piece of land, lots 54 and 55, from Frank Schultz, which is being donated to the town. It is currently has combined assessed value for the two lots of $200. And second, this will be open for public comment on September 15th at the second reading. And tonight this ordinance number date of 2025, ordinance of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing acquisition of block 116, lots 54 and 55 from Frank Schultz in accordance with NJ SA 40A:12-5, and I still move this on for first reading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this ordinance, on this first reading. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And that's all I have this evening, though.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on, we have finance, councilman Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three resolutions this evening. The first one is our payment of claims for the month. We're just over $2 million for this month, going out in checks. I wanted to point out a couple of the larger bills that are going. Our third quarter tax levy for Ocean County is due. That is just over $679,000. We're also paying off the road project on Daddy Tucker, which is just over $161,000. We have Pineland's Regional School District at $705,000, and Tucker Elementary School at $326,000, all going out this month. So I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing payment of claims in the amount of $2,19,109, and I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the payment of claims. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My next resolution is to cancel 2025 taxes due to the disabled veteran exemption. This is for two residents of the borough. One will be refunded $3,111.37 that they've already paid for this year, and the other one $743.36 that they've already paid for this year. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2025 taxes on property graded to 100% disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance. And I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, thank you very much. I have a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then my final resolution is authorizing the renewal of the Ocean County chip insurance membership. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the renewal of membership in the Ocean County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, and I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then I'll have one committee report later in the meeting, but that's it for now.
Okay. All right, I'll get you down through there. Thank you very much. Next is Public Works, Lauren Sewer, Council President, Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been reading two resolutions this evening. One has to do with authorizing a road opening permit for Curlew, and the second is to cancel water and sewer charges. Also like to announce that the public works yard will be closed Monday, September 1st, later day. I have a resolution of Borough Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing approval of a road opening permit on for block 116, lot 12, and granting refund to section 419-15 of the Borough Code, and this is to reconnect the gas service at 93 Curlew. I move this resolution.
Second.
All right, thank you. I have a motion and I'm sorry, a motion and a second on this resolution as read. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey to cancel excess water and sewer charges for the year 2025. The properties involved had a failed water meter, and I move this resolution.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And that's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, public filings and grounds and community affairs, councilman Deamore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one resolution this evening. This is for reconstruction improvement project on Kelly Avenue. Resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract to Arrowak Paving Company for the S F Y 2024 Road Reconstruction Improvement Project on Kelly Avenue. I make this motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one other thing, Your Honor. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Councilman Martin and his father Wayne Martin and other members of the Pride and Celebration Committee for the effort and countless hours spent in the planning and execution of the Friday night summer concerts at the ball field, which deserves our recognition and sincere thanking. I would also like to thank the Parker Town Fire Department and our local police office for being there to support the community and prepared to offer assistance had there been any emergency. Being at the concert each week, I couldn't help but notice the sense of small-town community and the coming together of our residents, both young and old, relaxing in their lawn chairs, listening to music, tapping their feet, and just having a good time. I also noticed that many young families arriving with children and kids having fun running in the outfield, playing catch, and maybe eating ice cream. I felt like this was watching good memories being made. Our tent and in the ball field revitalization project last year was to create a place for kids to once again play ball. We soon realized that we had also created an opportunity to utilize the space and provide other activities for our community. Our hope is the summer concerts were just the beginning. Early fall movie nights had been suggested. We would love to hear your ideas as well. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very, very nice. That was nicely said. You put everything together that happened, and it makes it sound like it was a wonderful summer, which it was.
I had an assistant.
I had. Well, your assistant was very well. All right, next is Administration and Regulation, councilman Dupree.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have several things. First, I wanted to thank Frank personally and Ron and the other council members that took this project on to improve the Bay Avenue ball field over the years that has been neglected, and it took someone like Councilman Deamore to bring it to the forefront and get the support from the community and also the council and the town to bring it up to where it should be, and this is the results we're able to achieve. So with that being said, all council members have a chance to look at the minutes from the preceding meeting. Any additions or corrections there being done? I so move that be accepted minutes as due.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to accept the minutes as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And a second item, Your Honor. I have a resolution of the Borough of Tuckerton County of Ocean State of New Jersey assessing liens upon dwellings or lands for property maintenance pursuant to Borough Ordinance 103-2 and permitted by NJ SA 40...48-1.14. I so move that we assess the liens as rated.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on this resolution as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
I have same on Kelly Avenue and yes on King of Fish.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then another item that I have, Your Honor, is the Tuckerton construction and code enforcement. On-site inspections were 28 for the month. Violation notices sent were 12. Bulkhead inspections were three. Open violations, eight. Violations cleared were four. Over requests were three. Public Works cleanups were two. Calls from homeowners were 17, and CO inspections, CO inspections, one. And that concludes the construction report. I also have the report from the fire company and Squad 85 EMS. Parker Town Fire Company has 21 fire incidents in the borough for the month of July. There was a total of 44 EMS calls. 22 were handled by Parker Town EMS and the others from Squad 85 and 12. That's the reports that I have for the fire and EMS. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you for reporting all of that and bringing us up to date. That was very good. Next is Law and Public Safety, councilman Peterson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the monthly activity report for the police department for July 2025. Calls for service were 319, arrests were 10, motor vehicle stops were 226, motor vehicle summons were 88, motor vehicle accidents were nine, medical was 44, and suspicious person in vehicle checks was 19. And I do have something to report on the committee report. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. I want to go to privacy. That's good. I have nothing else to do ahead. Again, I thank you for your letter. That was perfect. So we're going to move on to Madam Clark. Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Okay, thank you for sitting in with us tonight. Okay, have a good time.
You're right.
It's a fun season, right?
Not long ago.
That's right. Okay, now, Madam Clark, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. All right, so I have two things. First thing I have is a RAFL application for the Tuckerton Historical Society for September 6th, 2025. They are requesting waiver of fee for that specific RAFL application, for the borough application.
I move that we accept that request and issue the RAFL license free charge.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Do we do roll call or just on, on paper?
Okay, do a roll call. Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes, what was the date?
September 6th.
Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming that's the flea market, Landtown Flea Market. Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The next thing I have is another RAFL application from, let's see, the New Jersey Conservation Officers Association. They are requesting a RAFL application for September 27th and 28th, and also requesting waiver of the fee.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The next thing I have is a request for the facility use application for the Tuckerton Beach Association for Octo...I'm sorry, August 23rd, 2025. It's for a boat parade. I have all this stuff in line. I'm sure that they will give more details than I will, but I need approval for them to use South Beach Street Park.
I make that move.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
The next thing I have is a letter of resignation from our Department of Public Works Labor, Joseph Hannon. His last day will be August 20th. I just need a motion and a second to.
I'll make a motion with regret to accept his resignation.
I'll second with regrets.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, and we're all reviewing that resignation. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Breland?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Colangelo?
Yes.
Mr. Deamore?
Yes.
Mr. Dupree?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And that is all I have for this evening.
Okay, we're ready now to move on to the reports. And Mr. Martin, you said you had a report.
I did, thank you. Thank you very much, Frank, for the nice words. That's what I was going to touch on was the summer concert series Pride and Celebration put on. It was, it was really neat to see. It's hard to do a head count because everybody's moving around. A lot of the kids are moving around, running to the ice cream truck and stuff. But I think we averaged over 200 people there each Friday night. We had one that was cloudy and spritzing a little, that it was easier for me to count, and I counted 111 that night. And I think that was the least attended point because of the weather. But we're definitely over 200 people there on Friday nights. People coming and going. It was fun. The second, the last one, kids actually set up a volleyball net out in the outfield, and they were out playing volleyball while the concert was going on. So it was really, really cool to see the ball field being used like that. And I'll extend back thank you to Councilor Deamore and Councilman Peterson for their help with the stage. Frank was over every Friday helping me lug that stage out, get it set up, and then every Saturday morning.
Ron was there.
And Ron taking it back apart and getting it back off the ball field so that it was back in shape to be a ball field on Saturday mornings. But it was nice that our local U-12 baseball team, they opened the concession stand every Friday and had kids going out selling water, selling candy, stuff like that as fundraisers for their baseball team, which I believe is the Swamp Donkeys. So they tell me it's their name. But it was nice, it was nice to see everybody getting involved in that. In addition, we went around and Bunny and Renee went around and collected money for the food pantry at most of the concerts. And this summer, we collected just over $750 for the food pantry, just from the people that were out in the crowd. So I wanted to point that out. That was very nice, and thank you to everybody that generously donated. And then following up on what Frank said, we definitely want to utilize the field, the stage, whatever we can over there. It was, it was really cool to see, so we're definitely looking for more things to do. We have kicked around, Frank was telling me about movie night, possibly even trying to do a couple more concerts in the fall, maybe get involved with the porch fest that goes on and make that one of the places that a band plays up on the stage. So we definitely want to utilize it more. And seriously, if anybody has any ideas for things they want to see, we're always open for suggestions. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. For the remaining of the committee reports.
August 21st, which is this Thursday, the Tuckerton Chamber of Commerce was having their first meeting at O'Neil National from 6:30 to 8:30. Everyone is welcome. This is a step forward for the town because with the chamber, we'll get a lot more activities and a lot more things going on. So please support them. That's all I have.
Okay, that's fine.
I have a report to do. We have the Environmental Committee. I had to miss it because of a training session I had missed.
We missed you.
And our chairperson Beth is here. If you'd like to give your report, come forward.
Beth O'Kendrick, 209 Cedar Street, Tuckerton, New Jersey, Environmental Chair. We missed you, and Paul, you were going to keep doing this, I thought, but we had help. We have three new members. The guts were Carolyn Keane, Vincent, and Lisa. I don't remember her last name. We're looking at continuing on. I haven't talked to Caitlin yet just because it was a little fun weekend. Because we had started talking about removing the pear trees, the invasive root destroying awful trees, apparently. And when we talked about it, nobody even knew where they were, but now they do. And we're going to work on that. When I had called to speak to Savannah about a mix-up of the date of our cleanup adopt the highway, which is September 20th, not August 20th, as I had said. And anybody that wants to come, bring a friend, and it's really simple. It's mostly little bottles and cigarette butts that, you know, like, because we're kind of a clean town. But I talked with Jenny, and she said the yard could also help with that. You have a front end loader, I guess, Mike? I don't know.
Yeah, backhoe.
Well, yeah, okay. Well, it's all the same to me, wherever you're going. But anyway, and Vincent and John, so we're looking at new trees, and I'm going to make friends with my new friend Garrett because we're going to need money. Even though we're allowed to fundraise, we don't have any cash. And one of the trees, John, who's a new member, he looked into trees, and for sour something trees.
Sweet gum.
Sweet gum. Such not a garden. They were like 200 and some dollars. So we're all going to, you know, find out. And then they said, we don't like those trees because they drip spiky balls.
Yeah.
And I'm just going to leave it at that because I'm about to start laughing because Sam's going to make me laugh. So we're like, regrouping again. I know Caitlin still will help us because like she's doing the bad and stuff. She didn't just like leave. She just has a lot of life stuff. And Cynthia will be back in in the fall. So again, September 20th, if you want to come out to the draw at 10:00 AM, that's where we start. Thanks. I think that's it. What?
I have the litter signs, the bright signs that go up.
Oh, okay.
So I will put them up.
Okay, do you want me to remind you? Okay.
I'll have them up for you guys, and then they stay up all day because I usually just grab them on my way home from work.
All right, thanks, Brian.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, and thank you for everything you do. We've been working hard on it. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
You really are. Is there money involved?
Not for me, but for the environmental.
Yeah, zero dollars.
It's very important because we, we are proud of our town and want to keep it looking nice.
Yeah, and the first time we did it, I was like, we're really kind of clean. Like, we didn't know you couldn't go into the bushes. You're not allowed to go. And so there was like plastic that was in there, but for the most part, it's, it looks good. Little booze bottles, pretty much.
That's a setup, right. And my son has those little spiky things.
Yes.
And they are terrible. He's going to take his tree down because, you know, you can't walk without shoes, and even then you can triple them. So we don't like that.
No, we don't.
It's worse than the leg out.
Okay, are there any other reports? TBA now?
Yeah.
Yeah? Don't forget. Carolyn Keane, we have the Tuckerton Beach Association. We also had a very successful concert series this year. We had our last concert two weeks ago. Great turnout for all three, but the really great, and again, small-town feel. It's really nice. It just, I was sitting on the bulkhead, watching the full moon come up, and I went, if you didn't believe in God, you believe in it now because it was just so beautiful, and everybody was dancing and just having a wonderful time. But we raised a total of $1,599.
Oh, you have to pass that.
Yep.
It's all good.
For, for Tuckerton Food Pantry. And Bunny gave me the number tonight. I said, if I wouldn't know that, I would have given her another dollar. But yeah, and so thank you. Thank you for the permits. It's just, and the clean bathrooms and the trash cans, huge, huge success this season. Hopefully we'll be getting it again next year. We do have our third annual Tuckerton Beach Boat Parade this coming Saturday. We're doing it a little bit differently because we never seem to get all of the lagoons and somebody's feelings gets hurt. So, what we're going to do is we're going to meet outside of Green Street Park at six PM on August twenty-third. And we'll do some loops through out into the bay and through the cove where there's enough water. And then, as time permits, people will branch off into the different lagoons. We're going to use Green Street Park as a viewing area. So, there should be some, we're hoping there'll be volunteers there, we're hoping to pass out candy and stuff for the kids. I don't think we did, um, the pizza or the ice cream for this, but, uh, we'll be piping in some music through a Bluetooth speaker and bring your chairs, it's open to the whole borough to come up to watch. We need, like, people come in and see what's happening down on the beach, you know, to bring the community together. So, um, that'll be this Saturday, and fingers crossed, good weather, it's supposed to be nice. Hopefully, Aaron's gone by then because it's windy and it's a mess down on the beach, and that's probably why there's not a lot of people here today, so, but thank you. The town website also?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Could that be on the town website?
The book rate?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Carolyn, thank you for your, your work through also TBA.
My, my pleasure.
Great sense of humility.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any other committee reports, commission reports? All right, we'll move on to the public forum.
Moved over the public forum.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to open public forum, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, for, uh, any visitors who have not been here before, we have a five-minute limit, uh, on speaking. You will come up to the microphone, say your name and your address. You are addressing the council here, you are addressing us, that is who you look at when you vote. All right, so does anyone have any comments this evening? Mr. Solomon?
Paul's online, twenty-eight Water Drive and Sudani sixty-four Water Drive. Paradise Cove, we've adopted a safety program for Thompson's Creek, it's just so dangerous and it has been trashed in four decades. Uh, it's called Safety for Seventy-three, for seventy-three for safety. He called when you're going out on VHF radio, he called when you're going back in. He put three signs up, once four foot by four foot. Out on the Mars, we got permission from Forest Wildlife Refuge to do that. I went out there personally and did it, um, and we did two on each lagoon. They're yellow, um, um, to make sure that the sandpaper gives pictures of them, so they can put it in the sandpaper. Uh, also, at the environmental committee being, um, I had one of my neighbors come, Roger Hoffman, he's an environmental engineer. Um, he emailed me, I forget the name of the shrub or bush or whatever is they want to put downtown. It's not invasive, it's flowering, it'll look really nice. I think I sent you an email with a link. I'm pretty sure I sent you an email, um, I might even send Sam that same email, but, um, your email kept on coming back for some reason because I probably screwed it up somehow.
Yeah, it was overflown, I know I had a lot of people sending me stuff.
No, they're not, that's it, I'm, you know, having a good day.
All right, thank you, and thank you for everything you've been doing.
Jenny, is there room for one more volunteer on the environmental team, or is it the third? Is it, okay. And I know Roger, the environmental engineer, expressed an interest.
I mean, it's a company, and if he just hasn't said a lot to the mayor, to be interested in it.
Yeah, let's keep, keep it on the fire, and so, we're getting it running. All right, next.
Hey. Anthony Scaglale, one twenty-five Pearl Road, just wanted to ask a quick question. The, um, the ordinance that was read earlier about, uh, acquiring, uh, block one sixteen lots fifty-four and fifty-five, is the borough purchasing that, or is it being donated?
Donating.
And that's on the peninsula, right? Okay.
It's so we don't need to get any kind of construction easement or anything like that for the living shore.
Right, so those are the last two that we have to worry about?
Right, that's the last two.
There's still, there's still, um, the, the gentleman that owned that piece of property actually approached us prior to all of this going down, um, that he wanted to donate it to the borough. And then, the four-point-five million dollar, um, funding that we received, we're in talks and getting that up and going. And one of the questions was, you know, we had to get an easement from those individuals. Um, so this is going to help us out because we don't necessarily need the one next to him, but we would need him to have an easement on, yes.
So, so there's what, is there only two left that, that?
No, just one, just, um, the original one that gave us, but I, he's not even an owner there anymore.
Okay, that's one that's still above water, not underwater?
I think this one's a good portion of underwater. It can be out of water, it's, it's, um, it used to be the Zito property and then the, the property next to it, there was a bracelet next to it, yes.
Oh, right, next to it, okay. All right, I just wanted to go, okay, so that's good, because then that's on the way to where we need to go.
And you should see soundings hopefully within the next, great things like a month or so, well.
So, that project is moving, like, we're, we're moving.
They'll be out there on the soundings so they know that that's, so that.
On the base side?
On the base side, yeah.
Okay.
And then all the way out around the point.
Right, and they should go there right now and see what it looks like. All right, thanks a lot.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir. Good evening, how are you?
Let me get off there first.
Yep, okay.
Here's Gerard Schultz on forty-seven Hayden Road. Uh, just ride around town, I saw some obs- observations that maybe we should address. Um, my son went down a couple of weeks ago, he's from out of town, and, uh, he mentioned to me, he says, meaning, being that I mentioned to him, watching speed limit in town, of course, he really watched it, right? So, and it's from New York, so, New York place, yeah, by the way. Uh, but, uh, he said that as he coming down Green Street, into town, he says, he's looking, and all of a sudden, by the time he approaches it, he sees the speed limit sign. But in the distance, you cannot see the signs. Why? Because of the trees up across, trees on proper property. I don't know if you could do anything with the trees on proper property, that's why I've getting them cut back so the visibility is a little bit better on, on Green Street. But like, I did it myself, I just was riding down there and I saw three thirty mile an hour signs that were completely covered until you get upon it. Now, all of a sudden, somebody out of town, they're gonna get it thicker because of this, and I said, I'm scared of that. So, that's one thing. The other thing was riding by and just looking around at the floodwaters today, and I went down Little Lake Harbor Boulevard, before you make the turn, you go over there after the bay. I saw it on the way back, but going down that way, which would be our fire department from Park Town coming in and servicing us, would not be able to see the fire hydrant because it's completely covered with bushes. Coming back, you see, but if you're going down there, if there's a fire on Little Lake Harbor Boulevard, you're not gonna see that fire hydrant. So, what's that mean, oh, it's only a fire hydrant? No, it's a big, big concern because that's what they rely on, a fire hydrant. So, that's only one that I have to, there might be more. The other thing that I noticed was a woman walking on a baby carriage on Green Street. Why couldn't she want to use a sidewalk? They ride down South Green Street, look at a sidewalk, and I don't want it to be horrible. And one question, when I was on the planning board, I in turn requested that that be a new sidewalk put in, and that it was denied by, by the mayor. He didn't feel that it was important, and he got in touch with the engineer, and the engineer at that time felt, oh no, they're gonna have to replace it. That's not the same spot where I saw this woman with the baby carriage. And that's only one spot, and there's a lot of other spots too. Bad enough when you get down to face the trailer park, you have to walk out in the road. The thing, things to the county, that they come in and pave the road, they put nice signs in there and everything else. I was just hoping that they would have put something, you know, I'd say white thing or something like that. But still, no, it, it's good, it's good the way it is. Now, I'm not a complainer, I'm an observer, I'm trying to bring these up as observations. But one other thing I noticed is at the, at the concerts, you mentioned the other day, we had a little rain, had a little sprinkle. We didn't have a little rain, had a little sprinkle, we had a serious condition. I was smarter, get up before a lot of other people were, because I says, I'm not gonna be sympathetic, I'm not gonna have.
That was the one, the week before, the twenty-second or the twenty-third.
But I'm not gonna have lightning strike me dead. A lot of people were, there was a lot, a lot of elderly people, like I am, I mean, I'm up in the air soon, but I'm a little bit more. A lot of people would not be able to get up fast enough to get out of there, for that approach a storm that we had with the lightning. I think that there should be somebody that's in charge of this here concert, be able to go and say, that's it, let's cut it off, let's not put everybody in danger. Nobody got up until it started pouring, it was too late, and then the lightning came. And then I felt sorry for the people, but I also felt sorry for the conscious people. All their equipment that was out there got destroyed. They were out there trying to save their equipment, Bobby Keening across the street from that, he come over, tried to help him out a little bit, in order to save their equipment, but a lot of equipment got destroyed. Somebody should be able to say, that's it, cut it off, no more concerts tonight. But we, we gotta start thinking about that, you gotta start, start thinking about the safety of the peoples. Like I say, some of the things I did bring up was safety of the people. Fire hydrant, the sidewalk, the concert, okay? So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, yes, sir.
I'm Gary Corriere on nine twenty-five South Green Street. Uh, first, I want to thank Sam, um, he put a call in from the, a couple of weeks ago, I think, uh, for a sinkhole that had developed in the county that paved in front of, like, like swarm train is there. And we, but it would take thirty days to get out, they were out there in the afternoon, so thanks. Unfortunately, it's reopened. So, so, you want to put a call?
They use Flex Seal, huh?
I don't, I don't know, there was about eight guys there. But, uh, but it's opened up and I, I waited till it got to the point where if someone was walking there, they could step in and do damage. Plus, it's kind of going in the deep end, so that tore up, and that's gonna come back, you could call again. Um, so there's a lot of folks here that, who usually don't show up, but, uh, it's because of the water. So, I know that, uh, there's been the, uh, the water department that said it was from the construction that was going on on South Green, and we didn't get a chance to do the flush, uh, due to the drought last year. Uh, however, I'll, I'll tell you that, uh, myself, I can speak for about eight other people who live by me on South Green, it's not a one-day event any longer, it's five, six days in a row. The water is, uh, the color of urine, to be blunt. And obviously, if you have small kids, grandkids, or, you know, you're, you're really wondering, like, don't drink it is the real word. But, uh, shower in it or cook with it. So, so the, the question, and I know it's up and down throughout. Uh, one of my neighbors actually told me that he was speaking to someone on, I think, Topps Avenue, which is not in the beach section, and they've experienced a discoloration. So, I, I don't know what, if anything, could be done, maybe all of one of you can speak to it a little bit. I don't know if we can flush it, I know we're, we're scheduled for a flush in the fall, but is it?
Initially, uh, I can say that we've looked into, we haven't ignored it, and we have our, our people working on it. And Jenny has a, a summary tonight that she can share with you.
So, Jenny.
Okay?
I just don't want to take your five minutes.
No, no, but, no.
If there's anything else, you know, make sure you, you ask before.
No, that's, that's, that's about it, I was really just seeing what, what's going on. If you're gonna give a summary, well, we'll.
Yeah, so, with regards to the discoloration of water, so, at first, yes, we, with the water and steward department, with anything that you deal with, trying to figure out, narrow down what the problem is, you have to have data, right? You have to have recurrences, one-off sometimes, you can't figure out, it could be this or it could be that. So, when we first were made aware of the discolora- the discoloration of water, um, we kind of did chalk it up to the fact that you just had, we had just milled and paved South Green Street. So, that's a ductile iron pipe underneath there, and what happens with vibrations, when the heavy machines go over it, there's a chance that the iron deposit that is in the pipes tends to break loose and, um, get into the system. Meaning, the, not the water treatment system, the system out into the, to the, the pipes themselves. So, again, collecting data, data while doing that, we were monitoring, um, the testings. It was iron, because we tested the water, the, the colorization is iron. So, during that time, though, um, we had seen that where we normally produce about two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand gallons of water a day, during those times, our water treatment plant was producing four-hundred to five-hundred thousand gallons a day. So, that means, what they were kind of looking at was specifically in the beach area, you have more people come down during the weekends, people washing their boat, so that was acting like, almost like a flushing of the hydrants, right? So, you go from two-hundred to, to five-hundred, and it was flushing the, the system, and something could got broken loose. That's what we were wa- watching, happened one time. Well, now you're saying it's happening more often, which we are seeing, and we're seeing it uptown and in the beach. We're seeing it more, um, all different places. So, what we've been monitoring is, um, the filters that are in our system, what wells. We have two wells in the borough of Tucker, and we call them well number three, well number four. What wells are operating at that time? Because if you ever had to do, um, a true well in New Jersey, outside of Tucker, and there's, you know, I live in New Granton, I have a well. We're loaded with iron in New Jersey. So, we're mon- monitoring well three, well four, to see what's happening on that. Um, today, we started again with the sampling, because we are seeing it more frequently, but let me back up so you guys are not as nervous. Every day, uh, bacteria samples are taken all over the town. There is no bacteria in the water. The, although iron is not fun to look at, the water is healthy and will not contaminate, it's not contaminated. We have a third-party laboratory that tests that water on a daily. So, within our system, meaning the raw water comes from the wells, goes into our water treatment facility, and then we test it from there, that all tests perfectly fine. Again, third-party laboratory has to come in, the DEP gets those reports, it's something that we have to do frequently. When it goes from our water treatment facility into the, the pipes of the system, is where we're finding that the, the iron can be building up. Now, with that being said, because it's more frequently, we still do have to do the flushing of the hydrants, that should be done twice a year. We weren't even allowed to do it once last year because of the, the governor had put a drought warning on it, so you can't use that water. Um, but those should be tw- should be flushed twice a year. There's also, like I said, the two wells that we have to monitor, there's things within our water treatment facility called filters. There's four different filters that the water has to go through, we have to monitor them. The backwashing of our system, so all of that's being done, we have reports on it, you could come down and see our reports and it'll show you. But what I need now from the people of Tucker, and because, again, data shows where the, the problem is, right? We want to, we want to get to the pinpoint of the problem so we can fix it. Was it just in the system? Is it our filters? Is it that the water is in demand? Or do we just need to flush the hydrants like we need, like it's supposed to happen? Which we cannot do right now because the amount of water that we're producing, and then you go and you flush hydrants, our system can't really handle it, you don't want our system putting that much pressure on it. So, we have to wait till the fall to do the flushing of the hydrants. With all that being said, what we're asking of the residents is when you see this, when you have this, could you please, instead of running to Facebook, to please call my office? Six oh nine, two nine six, two seven oh one. That way, I can take your address, the time of day that you had, uh, observed this, does it, when you run your water, does it stop? Does it not stop? I need all that data, we're gonna try and compile that, we're working on it every single day, our water and tour guys are out there every day. But I, our licensed professional, um, has said, and again, we need a little bit of time to pinpoint where the fix is going to be. But he has said that the discoloration is only excess iron. It is not a health hazard, and we do understand that it's uncomfortable to look at, we really, truly do. Um, but every day, we're making multiple tests of the water, and it's, it's not us sampling it, it's a third-party company that we pay for to come in and sample that. And anything that would be a health hazard is absolutely within normal standards.
Okay, nice discussion, yes, a question, Paul. So, the testing of the water is, um, you may have mentioned, I was just asking, is, um, are you testing water that's actually, has gone through the pipes or is it at the?
Both. So, we have to test at the water treatment facility, so raw water comes out, raw water from our well comes out and goes through our system. There's a sink, like a regular household sink, that has to be tested multiple times a day. After the water goes through the water treatment facility, there's a si- a specific sink that's in there that has to be tested, that gets tested there. Then, there's multiple places throughout, uh, the whole borough that goes and gets sampled as well.
Is it, does it any benefit from having some jars thrown in, or is that over?
I mean, it's, it's, it's higher iron deficiency, we've tested it in other places, um, and it, it's the high, it's high iron. Which, again, I can't, uh, we're working every day to pinpoint what it could be. We're, we're working as a fact where we're just gonna run one well and maybe see how that well works versus the other one. But I can't give you an exact answer until I go through
Yeah.
the data to see what is, you know, and, and again, it is, I, I understand that, you know, seeing dirty water is not something that we want to see either. However, it, it is not a health hazard to anybody at this time, and we're working diligently to get an answer, to get it fixed.
So, once we pinpoint the problem, I mean, does that mean the pipes are breaking down?
No, what happens.
That the base iron pipes are rusting out, right?
Not always, because there's always iron buildup, because you're pulling from a well, like, you, just like anything.
Yeah, I had low water for thirty years.
So, it could just be that there's some buildup in the pipes. And the pipes, you, the pipes in Tucker and grounds could have like a belly in it.
How, how old are those pipes?
There, it depends on what road you're asking about.
Sixteen, sixteen ninety-nine, that's a good road.
It, it depends, and they could have bellies, and then you have T-lines, and then you have laterals, and you don't know where that, there could be one little piece of iron sitting in a cross pipe, and that water's still hitting it, and I can't get it out of the system until I flush it. And that's why it's not just Tucker and Beach. And that's why it's not just Tuckerin Beach area. I have it in other places. So it's pulling, and that's what we have to pinpoint.
Are these analyses public? No.
Yeah, I mean like.
I just don't give a little bit of my background.
Yeah, the reason.
I'm a former chemist for four years' experience. And when I see yellow water like this, I'm very concerned, because this is contamination. You know, you could say it's unfit to drink. It's not portable. I wouldn't want to drink it. I would not want to bathe in it. I would not want to cook with it. And can we find out, and can we get a scientific analysis of this?
Well, if the laboratory tells us that.
Right. And we have to get that analysis, not only at the source, but we have to get it as far downstream and for more users.
It requires to have all that, yeah.
And this is something that's been going on, Jenny, for, Garrett did attest that this first happened three months ago.
The first time.
Right, the first time. We've seen it. This was taken last Saturday. And I've experienced it over this weekend again, as well as many others here behind.
Right, but that's what I'm trying to say to you, that when the week, again, it's the timing too, right? You see it on a Sunday or a Saturday where the high demand is, so it's knocking stuff off.
But this is not, and probably some council members could attest to this. It's not only a Tuckerin Beach thing. This is a borough thing.
No, I.
People in the borough that experience this, and you know, even without the high consumption of the beach on the weekends. So it's something that's, wherever your, I don't know where your purification plan is.
On South Green Street.
It's on South Green Street, at the DPW headquarters?
Okay, so that would be upstream of Cox.
It's by the tower.
By the tower.
You have to, so the way that it pulls from the wells there has to go through all this treatment facility, and then it fills that tower, and that's how you have the pressure, and that's what we monitor. Every little thing that we do with water and sewer, New Jersey's Department of Environmental Protection has us every single day having a report that we have to do. And it includes scientific testing. There are outside chemical, we have to go up to bid every year to a laboratory. The lowest bidder of the laboratories, who gets the bid, and that laboratory has to come in and take samples. There might be somebody in here, I don't know if you've gotten, anybody in here's gotten letters, where those people actually come into your homes to sample your water in your home. That is required by us, by law, for us to do monthly. So yes, when you say that there's just certain aspects with regards to homeland security, right? So water treatment plants are really high-end on having Oprah requests and viewing records and how our treatment works. Because of homeland security, you don't want somebody having access to our computer system, any of that stuff. So there is a balance. But yes, we do have, and again, I would please ask, like you're saying that you have all that. Call my number, 296-2701. Call that number, so I can get that data in there. You can talk to our licensed professional. He has to have certification. And I know that, again, we understand that it's really uneasy. I'm hoping within the next two weeks to have, not hear of this again. We're working through it. But I just have to pinpoint where that is.
What bothers me, and some of my neighbors here in the borough, in the beach, is that this is not going to clear itself up until, from what you're saying, until the hydrants approach, the lines approach.
That was the first thing. That's what I said. That was the first. But that doesn't, that's why I need more data. It could be that. It could be that the filters in the system are, that could need to be reviewed. It could be that the well that we have has a little bit more iron in it when it's being pulled higher. There's a lot of components, and you just have to give me a little bit of time to get that data. Like I said, we first thought it was this one scenario, because it was one-off. It happened in June once. And then for the next, what, couple of days, or next couple of weeks, you didn't see it. But now it's becoming more prevalent, just recently. Am I wrong? Like, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. But within the last two weeks, it's becoming more prevalent.
You're correct. It happened once back in June.
Right.
Then I think we're about three, five weeks, but it not occurred.
And now it's.
And recently, in the last two weeks.
Correct.
I would say it's happened at a fourteen-day period, probably ten days.
So that's why we're, okay, what we were thinking about may not be the case. But that's why I need to get more.
The road construction is done in May, is that correct?
I thought it was June. I thought the milling, the paving was.
I thought it, okay, they didn't before July.
Yeah, well, yeah, before July.
Which made it possible to find some correlation, some kind of correlation. That activity is when we first started seeing it.
I said I.
But what bothers me about this is that people in the borough are also seeing this, and they're upstream of the number facilities.
That's South Green Street, is what I'm trying to say to you.
No, 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 I mean people on Cox Avenue.
But the water comes out our treatment facility, out onto South Green Street. That's the main.
Right, right.
Either way.
Right, right, okay, so it goes, it goes north and it goes south.
Correct, because you have North Green, North Green and this part of Bass. But our water treatment facility is on South Green Street, so the water goes.
So I did see, I did observe some activity over the weekend at the water tower.
Okay, sir, we have another question in the back.
Sorry.
So I do apologize, I didn't get the phone number. Exactly what information do you need? And we are subject to analysis, because I just, for the past six nights, I've been bathing my kids in tea water. So I'm not starting to break out.
What's your address? Well, after the meeting, just come up to me with your name, your address, and everything.
I'll leave you up for a minute, I don't say that a lot. So you need date, time of day, when we're, you know, this is, okay.
Yep.
And address, obviously. I know the flushing of the hydrants, I guess, is the main way to resolve this issue, but.
No, not necessarily. That's what I was just trying to say to you.
Okay.
When you had that one off, that's what we were hoping for.
Got it.
But now we have to dig a little bit more, because you are seeing it more prevalent.
So did this lab that we're utilizing, did they mention any ways that we can temporarily kind of make the water a little bit better?
They only, they only test the water. They don't, they don't talk about what's in the ground. Like, they're not, they're not people that are installing water mains or any of that stuff. They test them.
So it's strictly just iron, yes?
It's a hundred percent just iron.
Okay, because like I said, now I'm sorry, my skin issues on my.
There's another question in the back. Carol, Jenny, are you okay with us posting that on Facebook? Don't post your water problems on the TV.
Yeah, call us.
Just give you call with that information. I just gave it that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes?
Can you stand up and say your name?
Yeah, sorry.
Bruce Menzel, nine twenty-three, South Green Street. Mine's that color right now, still. I've been told over years, do they have a man going out town across the creek over there?
Yeah.
In case they stick low over here?
We have an interconnect with Little Lake Harbor Township in the event.
Do they have any trouble?
No, and they have to test.
Okay.
They have to test just as much as we do.
Are there any other questions, break up? All right, I'll go back to you. My last question. Go ahead, sir.
First, there is one, Nigel Lee, Road Company. Firstly, before I get started, I'd just like to thank the mayor and the council for extending a tax-free property tax to a disabled dad. I appreciate that move. Several issues I'd like to address this evening, and besides the tap water. One would be the condition of the bulkheads post-dredging of 2023. I've noticed, and when I'm boating up and down Flamingo, Huron Lagoon, there are quite a few compromised, leaking bulkheads. They've been brought to the attention of the borough previously, possibly as long as two years ago. And I'm very concerned about this, because we paid good money out of our pockets. Five thousand dollars per property owner on the lagoons that are on the bay side back in 2023. Now we see these lagoons, these bulkheads leaking sand and silt back into the lagoons. And I would like to see them properly addressed by the borough. Now, do we have ordinances dealing with, you know, you mentioned that there were three bulkhead failures and inspections that were done? What is the, like?
After you sent that email, I instantly, and this is going back, when you first sent me the email, I went in and visited Jim and Phil, and I checked with them to make sure that they were following up, and they were. They had a folder that they brought in front of me. They showed the letters they sent out to the homeowners. Unfortunately, they're at the mercy of trying to track down where the homeowner is, who the homeowner is, not the renter, but the homeowner. And a lot of times, these people just throw the mail out that they get. And Jim could update us on where we are now with them. But unfortunately, we have to do it a certain way every time for every complaint that comes in. And if we don't address it the same way, we could be held liable. So they are dotting their i's and crossing their t's. But with that being said, trying to contact and warning the property owners that they have to take care of this ASAP. Unfortunately, there may have to be legal action taken. But Jim could update us a little better than I can, because I only saw the work that they had done, so it's.
So there is a specific ordinance dealing with conditions of bulkheads? That's correct. Is there a fine schedule associated with that?
There are some that are complying. You know, Flamingo alone, this past year, it's actually since spring to now, there's been three, at least three bulkheads replaced on Flamingo, which is hard to do. So they are, they are pressing some.
Now, our lagoon, Flamingo Huron Lagoon, is a direct lead to the spit. So if we do any work on the spit, and we continue to have these leaking bulkheads on Flamingo Huron Lagoon, it's gonna drastically affect the spit condition. And we're paying what, almost five hundred thousand dollars for it? We put a spit in.
Four and a half million.
Pardon?
Four and a half million.
Four and a half million. Three digits off of that. The other, I'd like to quickly discuss with you, and when we left for this meeting, my wife and I today, we had to leave about an hour and a half early and go up here for dinner before, because we could not get out of Flamingo Road. Flamingo Road was totally covered. Little Lake Harbor Boulevard was totally flooded. I do not like driving my fairly new truck through saltwater, as many of you could attest to. I discussed this maybe a year or two ago with the council about having check valves put in the system, especially at 189 Flamingo Road, where my sewer, by my house on the road, goes directly to the lagoon. And when the lagoon comes up high, like right now, we have a northeast storm, right? All in northeast, as we've been getting, my properties are flooded. Check valves, I understand, were placed on Curlum, when they repaved Curlum two years ago. And I understand that those check valves are working fine. And I understand check valves, being a scientist, I understand check valves need maintenance. But, you know, having all my neighbors up the road from me, and also, you know, my friends that come to visit, you cannot get out of our house unless you want to drive through saltwater. It's the same for Little Lake Harbor Boulevard. It's the same for parts of Huron, you could attest to. Yourself?
Yep, I guess.
Also, yeah. So just want to raise the awareness of the council, you know, concerning the flooding of Flamingo.
We are very aware of it.
Okay.
As well. Thank you.
Well, with that being said, with the flooding, and it'll tie in with this errand that could be possibly coming up coast. Residents of Tuckerin Beach, you're able to park at the ballpark on Bay Avenue if you feel the need to put your vehicle at a high spot. If the town does own that, we will, originally, we're gonna come up with an idea where we give you a little permit that's free of charge. That way, we can track down who owns the vehicle, in case something happens and we have to do that. But if you do want to put your vehicle in the lot itself, please do not block the access to the field, as EMS, we use that for flyouts. But if you feel that you don't want your vehicle to flood it out, you are welcome to put your vehicle in times of high tide, due to storms, in the parking lot for the ballpark itself.
Mike, is there a security video on that?
Unfortunately, there is not. But if we notice that there are a large amount of cars, we can have the police duty patrols off and through there to keep an eye out. Thanks. Plus, we have some pretty nosey neighbors. One of my family members, being one, watches that Lake of Hock.
I have a question. About the filters.
Just get your name.
Steve, I'm sorry.
Get your name and address.
First of all, pleasure being here. Steve's asking, 191 Flamingo Road, Bruce is here. Talked about the filters in the water system. When's the last time they were changed? I'm just curious.
They're supposed to be changed every eight to ten years. The last time they were changed, I believe, they're within that eight, it's nine years.
Okay, so we're coming up on that now?
Yep, yep. And they're supposed to be, every two years, they're supposed to be inspected, and we get a report on that. The last time they were done was in 2023. So again, it's due. I don't want to say that it's the perfect storm, but I just feel like everything's all kind of coming at once. And we're trying, and we're gonna fix it. We can guarantee you we're gonna fix it. It just, I want to make sure I'm fixing the right thing, not just throwing. Because you're looking at money too, right? So those filters can be anywhere between thirty to forty thousand. So instead of just throwing taxpayer money at something, I want to make sure I'm doing it the right way as well.
Thank you very much.
I have another question. Where's the shelter now, the firehouse closer?
So the shelter?
Like hurricanes or tornadoes?
Our shelter was, yeah, our shelter was never at the firehouse. Our actual shelter for when we do an mandatory evacuation is Pinland Regional, either high school or middle school. It was the middle school. That's where the evacuation facility is, is Pinland's middle school. During Sandy, it was Pinland's middle school. It's staffed. It has a certain area for animals, people with animals. It has areas that people that don't have animals. So that's the evacuation facility.
Okay.
Yep.
The sheriff's department will step in. They do have mobile kennels for pets. They used to put them up in different areas, but now they have a mobile kennel that they can bring in by the sheriff's company. And same thing, Parker Town Fire Company, if a state emergency is declared and people are homeless, we can shelter people at Parker Town Firehouse. But Pinlands is, as Jenny stated, the.
Designated area.
Yes. And we do have highway vehicles in case anybody needs to be evacuated.
Do you have any other questions? Anyone else who has asked a question?
Just congratulations on the new cell phones that are going out. So everyone is, they're starting to run the cable, watching the other guy. So hope we're all now. Eighteen two months.
Did you have a question?
Of course.
Jenny, line eighty-three, Dawson Road, up in the beach. Pay attention to the news. If it says in the eastern, use a car. It's better to walk back in water and go get it. It's been that way for years, so. The other question I had is, do we have anyone who represents Tuckerin for a new project, this building on Summer Street? There's four hundred and fifty-some homes going up there. That means possibly nine hundred cars, they'll be coming through Tuckerin. That's a problem, and that's something that needs to be addressed. That's a lot, even if it's only five hundred, that's a lot more cars. I go to work for quarter to nine in the morning. The traffic is what backed up owners to the yard. So if you figure eight buildings, houses, it's gonna be horrible, and you can't ride it. There's no way. So I really think that somebody from Tuckerin should be addressing it.
I did address that with the mayor during the national night out. And unfortunately, Little Lake is not connected to Tuckerin as far as the municipality versus the township. We have no say in their variances and what they can and can't do.
Give a release to over there, then?
All we can do is offer our opinions, and just like anything else, they can take it with a grain of salt. I brought up about not only the traffic, but there's also a bigger issue of fire and EMS.
Oh, absolutely. And I said that a long time ago before this was even coming up.
Right, there will be a huge burden put on fire and EMS in the area. But that's something that they're responsible to look at. Unfortunately, Tuckerin has no say. The only thing we could do is make suggestions. And I did voice our opinion and our concerns to the mayor and a couple of council members. And it's duly noted, but unfortunately, they don't need variances because that property is designated as residential and they are allowed to do.
There's not a meeting coming up, 12:00 next week. And exactly, because I've been to voting meetings so far and each meeting, you know, more people. So people need to go and at least, there's a lot of people that are not happy about it.
Right.
So I've been telling everybody, even Tuckerden. They need to go to these meetings, even though it's Little Lake Harbor, it does affect us. Bad. I mean, we figured that could be 900 more cars coming through here. And I know, I have a problem at the lake, I even know I have an arrow that left. They don't stop. We need Eric to help me to go up the lake. I mean, really. Our taxes are good, they haven't, you know, it's, it's, it's really a problem. So I, I'd say people should go to meetings. You know, it's at Pinland now because there's a lot of people, there's more people than were allowed in the last meeting, so.
Thank you, Harry.
Like you said, leave your cars when they say flooding. It's hurricane.
All right, do you have any other questions? Okay, we'll, we'll, can you just wait for a few minutes? We'll close our meeting.
Move to close the public forum, second.
Motion is second to close public forum, hold your favor.
Aye, motion to a third, second.
Oh, a motion of a second to adjourn? All right.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.